I salute you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes? Can we adjourn that? Do not. We're having a motion to adjourn that. Second, motion by Brad, second by Sue, all in favor.
Aye.
All of us, same, motion here. We'll start out with item A, which is our public hearing for our budget. Okay, members of the board and community, thank you. Mrs. McGara is absent physically, but I can see that she's online. So I'll ask Mrs. McGara and Dr. Beeler to chime in if by chance I omit something from the school district proposed budget for the 2223 fiscal year. So when we look at our fiscal spending plan for the 2223 school year, it's broken down into our revenue. And we've identified the six main categories of revenue for the district. And these are in descending order: state aid, indigenous tuition aid, impact aid, fund balance, miscellaneous property tax, miscellaneous categories, and property taxes. Unlike many other districts, our property tax value is the lowest revenue stream unlike other districts. So we're pretty proud of that. There we go. Our state aid revenue breakdowns, basically for the revenues, we have $24 million, $24,823,757.80. So that includes our basic state aid, our BOCs aid, our excess pupil cost aid, transportation, building debt, hardware, and tax books for a total of state revenues of $24.8 million. Our revenue tax-related deals with property taxes, again, this is our lowest form of revenue of $250,000. There are some payments in lieu of taxes, interest, and penalties. A large category is our federal impact aid as well as our impact aid for students with disabilities. Our other revenue tax-related accounts for $5,913,898.84. Our miscellaneous level of revenue includes a list of about 15 items or so. It deals with tuition for adult education, driver ed reimbursements, other student fees, tuition day school, other districts, transportation, other districts, transportation, BOCs, other services for the district, and governmental entities, interest and earnings, and so on and so forth. This level of miscellaneous revenue accounts for $548,000. There we go. Our revenue fund balance reserves account for $3.7 million. This is our use of fund balance to reduce the tax levy, our ERS, Employee Retirement Reserve, our unemployment reserve, our technology commitment fund, and our worker comp reserve. As we know from previous presentation, Mrs. McGara has outlined our long-range fiscal plan and how much we will annually allocate for the multitude of reserve accounts to deal with unexpected changes and fluctuations in the market. Our revenue reserves accounts for $3.7 million. Our revenues from our indigenous tuition contract with New York State, including tuition and transportation, account for $12,389,100. The budget is broken down into three main categories: administrative, what we need to do and the funds we need to allocate to operate the district; our capital component, which is the allocation to provide a safe, healthy, and learning environment for students, staff, and the community; and our program component, which essentially is our instructional plan. These expenses by category are listed as follows: salary in descending order. Salary, fringe, debt service, BOCs expenditures, materials and supplies, equipment, and contractual. And as you can see on the slide, our salaries account for $20,409,000. Our fringe benefits, all of the benefits and contractual entitlements that we have for our employees is $9.9 million. Our debt service and transfer is $3.6 million. Our BOCs expenditures is $6,319,000. Approximately $1.3 million for materials and supplies. Approximately $1.7 million for equipment and vehicles and other contractual expenses for $4,099,000. When we look at the percent of our expenses in those three state aid categories, our program expenditures, all of our program, is 74% for $35,324,000. Our capital component is $7,131,000. And that accounts for 15% of our expenditures. And our administrative costs to operate and run the district is $4.9 million, or 11%. If you go back year to year, budget to budget, these numbers are pretty consistent. However, I do believe if you look over historical perspective, we have increased our program expenditure to put more money in the classrooms and the staff members serving those students from an academic component. When we take a look at the administrative detail, these list all of the expenditures within the administrative category: the board of ed expenses, district clerk, meetings, votes, superintendent, the business office, auditor, treasurer, and so on and so forth. The actual expenditures for the administrative component, if we go back one slide, sorry. The administrative component is 11% for $4.9 million. And those expenditures are listed on this slide here, $4.978 million. If we look at our program details, what it costs us to run the district, these program costs include legal expenditures, security of the plant, central processing, insurance, curriculum, supervision, in-service, salaries of teaching, regular school, regular classroom teachers, special education instructional programs, BOCs, career tech ed, special schools like Randolph Children's Home, Randolph Academy, library expenditures, computer-assisted programming, our technology platform, attendance, staff, guidance staff, health, psychology services, social work, and our liaisons. If we look, you can see that our program expenditures also include co-curricular activities, athletics, transportation, the bus garage, contracted transportation for routes for programs that we do not provide transportation to, our retirement reserves or retirement contributions for the employee retirement service, civil service staff, or TRS, our teacher retirement system for all of our instructional staff, social security benefits, workers comp, unemployment insurance, regular insurance, health, dental, and flex plans, as well as transferred to special aid and our school lunch fund. Our program expenditures, 74%, is $35.3 million. And lastly, rounding out, our capital expenses include the operation of plant, our utilities, maintenance of our plants, BOCs capital reserve expenses, portions of our ERS, portions of our TRS based on the employees covered under capital expenditures, again, social security, workers comp for those individuals. And our capital expenditures and our capital investment equals $7.1 million. Overall, the budget includes no additional levy to the community. That remains flat as it has since 2013. Important to note, the school district has not raised property taxes since 2011 fiscal year. And we've maintained that, and we expect that that will continue. If by chance, on May 17th, if the community rejects this spending plan, then we have the option of going to a contingent budget. We don't get to adjust the budget. We can put the same budget back up for vote again at the exact same amount, or we could come back and reduce the budget. But if we stay with a contingent budget, that means the community cannot use any of our facilities for free. That means that we cannot go forward with our capital purchases for buses and transportation, which I believe we're looking at six transportation vehicles. Okay, so we would not be able to maintain our fleet's repurchasing and retiring of older vehicles to get newer, more efficient, safer vehicles. We would not have non-union or non-certified salary increases, and we would not be able to transfer capital as part of the budget. So it's important that the community ask questions. It's important that they know that we are actually reducing our total expenditure, although we are adding 21 additional staffing positions. So I would challenge the community to find another district that is adding 21 instructional physicians, 21 positions to their district, and having a lower budget to budget vote. The vote for the budget includes a proposition to create a capital reserve proposition. This is essentially a $25 million piggy bank for us to use for future referendums for future capital expenditures in the district. Another referendum for additions to our athletic facilities, pre-K building, a new transportation facility. This is long-range planning. The term of the capital reserve proposition is 10 years. The maximum amount that can go into the fund is a total of $25 million over the lifespan of the 10 years. This requires voter approval to implement, and it requires voter approval to have a deduction or withdrawal from the capital reserve account. And lastly, the vote is May 17th, from noon till 9:00 PM in the high school gymnasium. And that concludes our capital presentation on the budget. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Yeah, I do. So let's go back to slide number nine.
Levi, do you want to go back to, what is the slide title?
Expenses by category chart.
Okay.
You touched on buses, so I'm just curious, where does the buses come from? Purchasing new buses, transportation, where does all that?
I believe that goes into the program component.
Vehicles are actually under equipment vehicles? That's the $1.7 million?
Yes, I'm sorry.
When you, is that what you meant, which category?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Where does it come from? And how does this play in, you touched on the buses, how does this play in with regulation or new legislation involved, we're to electric?
This does not include any consideration or discussion for electric vehicles at this point. There has been some movement and some conversation on a statewide level with the business officials, and much smaller for the superintendents. It just hasn't trickled out yet. I don't believe there's any substantial details on how this is going to play as of yet, but this does not include any plan for electric buses at this point.
But when we think about long-term planning, at some point when we talk about all this with capital projects, we've got to start looking at the infrastructure for electric charging stations.
Yes.
And obviously, we all know that we have to do renovation of the bus garage. At some point, we need to start thinking about the needs of the new infrastructure.
We did meet on this about two weeks ago, the transportation department, and Mrs. McGara, I'm with a consultant. At this point in time, the buses are considerably more expensive, around 80% more. And the distance that they can travel really impedes our ability to move. So there are a lot of factors here that need to be considered. Everything from, you know, if we're taking a bus ride to New Fame, we're going to have to stop and charge somewhere. It's surprising, so some technology advances have to be made, but you're absolutely right. We have to have the infrastructure in place for, even if it's buses or other vehicles, let alone just the buses. So that is on the radar, or, but it is just, at this point, just on the radar.
We may see more positive movement, just kind of on a philosophical plane, with vehicles that would not be considered buses, like minivans or passenger vans or sedan-type vehicles, apart from even a minibus, a certainly large 66-passenger bus. The technology just isn't there to meet the goals for the electronic needs for the charging bus. Yeah. But I think this is an aspirational recommendation on the part of the state as well as, you know, many industries, but we're a few years away from implementation.
When is it supposed to take effect? Like 10 years now, or?
I've heard, I've heard different dates, so I'd have to get back to you. But at one point in time, I heard 2035?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, by 2027, we're looking at all the bus purposes in zero emission.
Which isn't a deal.
And I would imagine, once some of these things start to shake out at a statewide level, this will be a topic that will continue to be visited in this part of the state's long-range plan. I'm sure that it will be tied to future aid increases. There will have to be movement on the state part for transportation aid. None of that stuff is known, so I would lump this into an aspirational goal, kind of a moonshot, if you will, in the part of Albany. It's not, it's not a bad idea, it's just there's no way 712 school districts in state could convert to. So we'll put a pin in that one to see.
Well, the only reason I ask, and I know it's long without, but if Karen was here, she'd be asking about long-range planning, so this is a more into it.
Yes. I know a lot of Karen's not here, so Mark and I are like, that's later on.
We could channel her.
Yeah.
Kind of the chat.
We do not want to look at the chat. Yeah, I mean, Karen is right. I mean, if this is going to come, we need to start having this conversation about how we make that transition. And to me, it seems logical to start with any vehicle that's not a bus, and then we start to build our infrastructure for the charging stations. Right now, there was a charging station behind the bus garage. I understand that's been disconnected because this infrastructure couldn't handle it. But that's, that's a citywide issue as well.
So back to the expenses by category chart, you mentioned we have $1.7 million in there. How many buses are we looking at this year?
Six vehicles, I believe.
Either six or eight.
I think six buses and I thought too many vans. Yeah.
Six buses.
Buses.
For, the goal is to keep it on an eight-year lifespan that maximizes the residual value. So as we're transitioning from what is really now probably an 11- to 13-year lifespan for the buses to that eight-year plan, where you'll see, and you did see last year, a larger number of buses. Typically, we don't purchase between six and eight buses every year, but we're moving to that new cycle. I believe this is the last year. And then all of our buses will have a eight-year lifespan with us to return on the investment with it, which is more significant, as well as a reduction in maintenance and out of warranty.
The market for surplus buses that still have life expectancy is exceptionally high at this point in time. Much higher than it's ever been.
Are you in the buses that are ready to bring those in buses?
Not this fall. That would be a good conversation for the finance committee.
Come on, Karen.
She's going to be like, I can't even leave town. Thanks, Lori. Okay, thank you.
Levi, thanks for the technical assistance, as always.
And next, we have our presentations for our retirees. So we have a number of retirees, and many of them are on property today. So we're excited to have them here. We do have some refreshments afterwards. So once we introduce all of the retirees, we'll take a quick break for COVID-friendly cupcakes, so everybody gets their own cupcake. And I'd like to start with Prospect Elementary School, and I'll turn it over to what I saw her propose.
I have a plethora of individuals here tonight. And I use a big word, so to be proud of myself sometimes, it's hard to get out of prospect language. But after seven years of working with these individuals, they are not only teachers, teacher assistants, or keyboard specialists, they are friends. So it's hard to talk about trends and not get emotional because you develop a close bond when you work that closely together. So with Pam Boo, she is one of our preschool teachers. She has been a team leader, a family fun night extraordinaire, and field trip planner beyond belief. Pre-K has requirement of multiple field trips throughout the year. So she has become an expert on not only doing it for the full-day grant, but the half-day grant at the same time, and just making sure we're doing all of that well. And always thinking outside of the box to help meet kids' needs on a personal note. We do love to run together, so we've run many half-marathon. And we'll be able to continue that after she retires. Congratulations, Pam, and thank you for everything you've done for our children. Next on my list is Barb Sharilla. She has been a reading first coach, a reading interventionist, after-school rate support, oftentimes coordinating the after-school, summer school coordinator, coordinator of Dr. Sue's week for I don't know how many years. Always looking for great authors. We actually have an author visit coming up soon that Barb has coordinated with another reading interventionist. So we're excited to have that. Always pursuing to do what's best for reading for our kids. And always looking at the big picture instruction, but then also the little pieces of what interventions are best to use. Always phone call away with any question or anything like that. So congratulations, Barb. Karen Edwards has been a teacher assistant for a long time. She's moved to multiple different rooms within the building. So she may have had the most rooms across the building of anyone to date, including a little office in the locker room currently. She has been a preschool TA, worked in classrooms, and a one-on-one, always flexible and willing to do what's needed, and always willing to let me know when I may have stepped over some line that I didn't need to cross and like how we can solve it together. So always there to, you know, have a good laugh, but also make sure we're all headed in the good direction. Then I have Chris McKeone, the queen of books within our building. And it's been just exciting to see everything change with the change in the library location. We didn't realize the impact of being in a dark space all day long. And that books just don't thrive as well when they're hidden in a small space that's not as open. And so it's been great to see our library come to light. And having Chris as a big part of the process and design and making sure that all of our shelves are filled with great books for kids has been wonderful. Her love for books is passed on to the kids. And it's just been great to see, last year, we couldn't use the library much, and she was very flexible with what we needed to do there. But it's been great to see the new library in use. And it's much kudos to her for how it's set up and organized and that the kids can have their fingers right on the books and very accessible. So thank you, Chris. I also have Tana Thomas.
She's on the call.
Okay, so Tana Thomas, who we call Tammy, has been a great asset. She was a retired teacher, they came to work at our preschool. And it was wonderful to have someone with the tree experience come right into the classroom and be there to support and help and be our biggest cheerleader for what's good for kids within the building. So congratulations, Pam. And I can't talk about Ellie if I'll cry, but there's a thumbs up. Ellie is not here tonight, but many of you know, when you work with a secretary for a very long time, you become best friends in a lot of ways. And so that friendship is irreplaceable. It's your person that you kind of vent to, they're kind of your security box. They kind of take in, make you look good when you might be a little flustered. And Ellie's been a prospect for an extremely long time, and we'll be greatly missed. But congratulations to her on her retirement.
We have a Seneca retiree, Mrs. Val. We retired early through the first marking period, so maybe a little bit after that. I'll just, and she wasn't able to join us this evening, but I, and I've said this before about Kim, and Nikki, if you want to jump in. Kim, as a teacher assistant with us for many years, similar to Sharon, was really the jack-of-all-trades. They went, Kim went wherever we asked her to with some of our senior children or into classrooms at a moment's notice because a teacher needed to be somewhere else. And I think that truly is, you know, the superpower of our teacher assistants. They go anywhere, whenever they're needed, often times virtually, for no notice. And they deal with this file, and certainly Kim is in that category. I know she's been gone for a few weeks back around November. We're going to make sure we can come back with Kim. We do have a gift for Kim as well. And I just want to thank Kim personally for her years of service to our students and to the students and staff at Seneca.
Mr. Seaver. We have two of our high school staff that are here tonight. They're retiring shortly here in June. And I already have something in my eyes, so. We can't quantify the number of years, or we can quantify the number of years that Ken Dry, and GJ, and Paulson have worked in the district. 30 for Ken, 21 for Gene. What is immeasurable, though, is the impact it had on our students, our school, our district, and our community. You know, every time I run through this, I haven't cried. Now, all of a sudden, I hear you. The number of lives they have touched, influenced, impacted, and improved is countless. And I'm going to start with Kim. I started working in Salmaque in February 93. And I met Kim in February 93. At that time, Kim and Lori John somehow taught me to coach a modified girls track. I play baseball. Since then, I've worked with Kim, and I can truly say that in my eyes, there's been no one that has done as much for our students, our school, and our community. She is one of a kind. Her willingness to help serve our students, families, and community is unparalleled. If you needed something done, Kim was always on board to lead it, help with it, or just do it. Kim's shoes are going to be difficult to fill, and I'm trying to, and I'm just not sure how I'm going to do that. She's been a leader in our STEAM initiative, and I'm convinced we'll not find someone that can do what she does. Although she has not coached in a while, she's been advisor to the Business Honor Society, back at Key Club Robotics. Currently, she's been running our student print shop. She teaches JCC classes, as well as many of our other business classes. Kim Dry is always, always has been, and always will be, an epitome of a warrior, a warrior family. She is someone I truly admire, and I strive to be more like. And although we are happy for her, we will miss her dearly in the halls and cell now. Anytime, anytime. Now, I met Gene in mid-'90s. I was teaching seventh-grade life science at the time. Gene was working for BOCs. He helped run a program for our students at Camp Alligator. It was an overnight program, and he had seventh-grade students from Salmaque and a few other schools there. And again, I'm surprised we got through it, but it was, it was a couple-day program, and I just had a phenomenal time. After that, we rode back and forth together to graduate school. Ultimately, as I ended up coming to the high school and ultimately moving up and becoming an administrator, he came and started teaching 10th-grade biology. And what I've learned quickly about Gene is that he's always there and willing to help. I also learned that his stories are at a I also learned that his stories are endless. And whatever the topic, he has a story. I learned that he has a dry sense of humor. And that his jokes sometimes take a little while and thought to understand it. Jean is definitely someone who takes initiative and has helped organize numerous activities, programs, and field trips. He's taken on many leadership roles and initiatives. He's been a longtime golf and bowling coach. Aside from teaching living environment, he's also taught JCC zoology. He's taken our drone classes to the next level. And he's been fully involved in our school, helping with safety planning, teaching our emergency medical class, and organizing kayaking trips. What Jean does on a daily basis to help our school run smoothly is indescribable. We wish him the very best in retirement, and he will be missed here at all times.
Where's the speech? We do have Mr. Nary here, bowling assistant coach. And I believe there's one more surprise in store for Mr. Jake House.
He can come down here, man. We'd appreciate it. As everybody knows, Jean's been coaching bowling for 20 years. Has a lot of students and a lot of bowlers. I've had a chance to be coaching and working with him for the last 10 years. And I brought a few fronts. But put out the word, and some people wanted to come say hello. I'd like to present you with this plaque that says, "GJ Houseby, teacher, coach, mentor, and friend."
Thank you so much. This has been a lot. Got the, all the names on paper, and I looked them all up.
There would have been more, but there was a lot of those finals for colleges and universities or something.
We're out of college.
That's someone I'm gonna start taking my money in.
A Jean.
Alicia.
Some of the else inherited the pom-poms, so.
So congratulations, all the retirees. We do have one more retiree, which is Bob. As many of you know, he will change to be, well, yeah, he's been there. I'm not sure he'll be bugging Lisa just as much as, oh, she'll be bugging Jean. Get your honey do list prepared, right? Everything that you're gonna do. What's funny is, you know, Bob said he started in 2011, 2012. And, you know, we have the budget presentation. And back then, our budget was $25 million. So who would have thought we were gonna grow $2 million a year? That's what the issue that Bob's leaving to pass over Marcus, that we've gotta increase the budget by $2 million every year. So that's kind of what our cycle has been. You know, but when we first started, you know, he was, he might have had a couple rough years. You know, we're a unique district, right? We have our own unique ways. And I think the thing that I love about Bob is that we always tried to say, you know, like, what if? What if we could do this? And he always listened to us. And then he got on board and 90% of the time embraced what we were talking about. You know, and it starts with, with the program. And you've seen how our budget for a program is, you know, $35 million. That's a lot for another district that's our size. And tell us who can invest in the program, you know, we've done. And to be the leader, you have to surround yourself with good people. And that's what he did with all the retirees here. So we're gonna miss him. And I try to initial dis- but he just.
It's hard, isn't it?
And I'm a crier by nature, so, you know, it's real tough. But I look back at, you know, like what we've accomplished, the scheme, you know, all the renovations we've done with perfect, the high school. You know, we got rid of Sonic to School, which Carrie renovated on behalf of the nation, you know. And it's a beautiful building. But look at all the beautiful stuff that we've done and that we want to keep doing and planning for the future. And so I just want to say thank you for always embracing our what-if ideas, especially with Buds Park, you know. We said, you know, what if we could reset property? You know, then would we be able to renovate it? And luckily, you know, we could work with the nation and the city and all come together and do what's best for the community. And isn't that what we're all for, is trying to build not only a better school district, but a better community? And I think when I look at the faces of the people retiring, that's what everybody here is trying to do. And it's, it's really great. And it's, you know, I'm sad to see people leave because, you know, Jean taught my girls bowl. Jordan took a little longer. Watched shit out there, you know. And Kim's always trying to give you the run for mayor. So I guess you're doing it now. So tag your ass, you know. And Barb, you know, we went to France together, for God's sakes. And went on a train for however many days back in, it was like 2014, many, many, many years ago. You know, so it's like I see all of you and I've had experiences and you're really gonna be missed. And not to take words from you, Bob, because we're really gonna miss you. And, you know, you've been that leader. You spearheaded a lot of these projects. You've taken what I said literally. I think my favorite thing that Bob ever took literally is when we were doing Buds Park, I used to joke and say, hey, I want a gate at the back of my house so I can just walk right into Buds Park. And Mark called me one time, he goes, are you serious about getting that idea back there? He goes, because Bob really thinks you are. And I said, no, you know, I don't think I look so good. But if I'd asked him, I'm sure Bob would have done one thing or another. And so I'm really gonna miss him. You know, we really were always an advocate for the kids while their heads were letting. When our Native Americans teams came and said they want to wear their negalia, you were all for it. One of the kids came and gave us a presentation about flying the pride flag. You know, right there, again, you were there to support them. And so you always put the kids first. And that's, I think, what I really admire. And I'm really gonna miss you. And I wish you nothing but the best. So, thank you.
I just wanted to add today too. I've been here for seven years as a school board, almost seven years, and been working with Bob. We've had ups and downs. We've had our rocky times. We've had our good times. You know, but I think the biggest thing to look at is our district is on the rise. And it's been on the rise for a number of years. You know, a lot of that is a credit to Bob and listening, you know, and taking action. One, as a board, we've said, we want to do this, we want to do that, we want to move forward, we want to try this. And sometimes he says, well, you know, that's not, that's not the greatest idea. Let's modify it, let's tweak it, and let's figure out the greatest idea. You know, that's, it's been a really good collaboration we've been doing this time, you know, probably since. Like I said, we don't always see eye to eye. But when we get to the end of it, it was always for the betterment of our district and the betterment of the kids here. Making better learners. And I always ask, you know, how are we making it smarter? That's one of the things that's constantly talked about when we have our executive meetings or the learner retreats. Usually it's, it's thrown out there, but in the first half hour, I gotta ask the question. How are we making it smarter? And he always has an answer. He's always responded, we're doing this, we're doing that. So, you know, I want to say thank you. You know, these seven years have been great. But I think our district is moving in the right direction. Everything we're doing, it just looks better and better every single year. I do like the fact that when we didn't have our meetings, Bob took my idea and ran with it. A few years back, you know, there was a time when a lot of complaints existed. And as board members, we feel those complaints from the community. Honestly, that's why we're elected. We've got to hear from the community. We've got to hear from the staff. We've got to hear from the students. We've got to hear from everybody. Well, I had a list compiled at one of our retreats. And jokingly, I said, all right, this retreat, we're gonna create Festivus. We're gonna have airing of grievances. Those Seinfeld fans don't want to talk about Bob. It was just one of the things that we just started talking about in one of the retreats. And all of a sudden, every retreat, Bob's asking, all right, what do we got for Festivus? What do we got for Festivus? What do we got for Festivus? And we have a list, and we go over the things that we've heard that were wrong and we try to fix them. And we take time to actually do it, and Bob will implement it. So a lot of credit to that. You know, it was starting off as kind of, I'll say, it was a negative thing. You know, I want to air your grievances. I want to get down to the nitty gritty. We turned it into a positive, you know. And I'm glad he had a hold of mine and actually listened, and we didn't move forward with that. So thank you.
And I share that with my superintendent colleagues. They have Festivus meetings and they look at me like I've been sane. But I have to tell you, Karen, in all candor, that has been one of the most productive things as a board we've done so that we get to the real front of the issues. And I thank you for, all kidding aside, and we never got defeats of strength, so.
Almost.
Almost. There were a few times where it almost got to that point. But I mean, good effective boards and strong leadership teams work through the difficulties. And I thank you, Karen, for helping to make us a better district and a better board. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just, just so you know, this is my running list. I check them off as we go. But thanks, Bob. I appreciate it.
We're gonna do a roast.
Cut the camera, everybody.
Thank you.
Let me just make a couple notes. You know, retirements are very personal because they affect individuals in a pretty profound manner. And retirements in a school setting also truly affect the rest of the school community. Tonight, we're celebrating the retirement of several very valued school family members. And while I'm happy for each one of the retirees, there's a portion of me that's really sad to see them leave our school. And I think many of us feel that way. Mr. Brian Stein's been serving the Salamanca community for 11 years. During this time, the district has seen an incredible amount of growth and success. I firmly believe the district, the community, and most importantly, our students have reaped the benefit of Bob's work and that his legacy will continue to grow for many years to come. On a professional and personal level, I thank each one of our retirees and Bob for your service.
Okay. I came on the school board not knowing you. And it's been a real pleasure working with you these last four years. Taught me a lot about what's going on in this area. And we all appreciate you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Likewise, Bob. A pleasure, pleasure working with you over the past six years. It's, you know, there were some, a lot of rocky, you know, moments throughout, you know, throughout, you know, our department, the distance here for the last six years. But really, you know, we have jealous of the board and I give you credit for bringing us all together. And, Jared, go ahead.
So I was, you know, Lisa and I were talking last night, and she asked how it was. And I said, you know, I'm really good and comfortable with my decisions. And in a leadership role, they always say, you know, when it's time. You know, when you're hurt, you know, in your mind, you know, your level of what's next. And I'm very comfortable, and I'm sure our retirees are, that we wrestle with these decisions. And there's been many sleepless nights, and I wonder what if. And as I look back on the what became, and Teresa's right, we spent a lot of time talking about what if. And then we started talking about how can we? And then we get to look at what we did. And Buds Park, I thought you were gonna mention the Jumbotron. Originally, we had a Jumbotron, and then we had a jumbo Jumbotron, the largest warlord in New York State. Although I am told in Texas standard, it's like TV football size. And I look back and, and I think what I'm most proud of is the fact that Salamanca recognized the inherent good of our community and our staff. And we actively went out and made our staff that was here better. We went out and pursued people that were connected to the district. And we gave them a forum to come back home. And we surrounded ourselves with exemplary people in each of our classrooms, our buses, in our cafeterias, at our board table, in our administrative cabinet meetings. And I think one of the things that we can be most proud of is that while other districts have spent time wondering what could be, we actually got to work and made it a reality. And, you know, there are lots of things that I'm proud of. I'm proud of our graduation rate increasing, but that's a function of everybody in the district. It's not a function of me. I'm proud of the fact that as a superintendent, I have never raised taxes. There aren't many superintendents who can say that. And we've increased programming and we've increased our investment in our staff. I'm proud that we brought in $160 million over the last nine years to indigenous districts in Western Europe, as the first district to get impacted. But I think what I'm most proud of is that the legacy of success is back in the district. And I'm very proud to have been a small, small part of that. From the bottom of my heart, the bottom of my family's heart, I thank you for what, without a second's hesitation, has been the best part of my 30-plus years of education by being a Salamanca worker that I profoundly thank.
Okay, enough of the mushy stuff. We are going to take a short break for cupcakes. Please come down and help yourself.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody, for a little bit of time out. The honor of the retirees and get a couple of pictures, cupcakes. That's awesome. So we're going to move on to our public communications conference. Do you have anybody here for today? Oh, I'm sorry.
So just a brief update on some safety issues. Over the past two weeks, we've seen an increase in the number of positive cases of COVID-19. These numbers are not alarming, but they do parallel a trend throughout Catarara County and the rest of Western New York. I just want to assure our staff members, our students, the grownups in the community that we are continuously monitoring all of the cases and are in regular communication with the local Department of Health. Should we get to an area of concern or a number of concerns, we will go right back and follow the directions that are right into us from the local Department of Health. On another topic, which is, also falls under safety, the high school, our Warrior Academy, and most troubling Seneca Intermediate have seen an alarming and exponential growth in the number of students in possession and using marijuana or THC vape devices while on our campuses. Over the next several weeks, our administrators and staff are going to be collaborating to develop a proactive education plan as well as to develop a task force to combat this problem. These numbers that we've seen, we have never seen numbers at the level that we're at right now. And I think that that's a concern throughout our school district and throughout the community. And we have had several conversations up to this point over things that we need to do. But it's time to take some formal action and put a task force together that will proactively educate and then remediate these concerns that are starting to seep with our students. So I just wanted to share that information with the board as well as the rest of you.
And in that vein, this week, my task is assistant principals in the district to collaborate on revisions to the district code of conduct and to have that ready for presentation in, I think, in June for the board to have an opportunity to buy some equipment for that. So that will be coming soon to a theater near you for revisions to the code of conduct. And Dr. Miller is right, the rate of instance of students with marijuana-related paraphernalia or possession has grown significantly, in no small part, I'm sure, due to the prevalence of dispensaries. And this is something that I think most school districts will be wrestling with in the immediate future. So stay tuned for that. So any questions?
I just have a comment on that. We also include the word cannabis. There's been a lot of different associations with the word marijuana and racism and so forth. So, I mean, we're both interchangeable. So, I mean, cannabis and marijuana, but to be more accurate, to the plant itself. We use cannabis. And New York State has the Office of Cannabis Management. I happen to work in the world of cannabis, too. So just speak those terminologies since we're going to educate. Start right there.
Word up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody for public comment since the question? And then do we have anybody for Title VI here? Something. So then we're going to have the, that's a 2023. All right. Get up and present. Whatever you feel valuable, whatever you feel wanted to. So introduce yourselves. And then it sounds like Faith is going to be the emcee.
Sure thing.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Sydney John. I'm the president. I'm the co-treasurer and classroom representative. So we're here tonight to ask to dedicate the new Prospect Library to Mrs. Sidney Moore.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. We're here tonight to ask to dedicate the new Prospect Library to Mrs. Sidney Moore. Dear Board of Education and Administration, as you know, the class of 2023 has earned a scholarship fund in memory of Mrs. Sidney Moore with funds raised from the Sidney Moore Memorial IK. Mrs. Moore spent many years teaching at Prospect School and dedicated her life and time educating and positively impacting the lives of thousands of Salamanca children and families. Her dedication didn't end once you left, once you left her classroom. Mrs. Moore came to sporting events, plays, band shows, art shows, and science fairs to support former students. The class of 2023 would like to see Mrs. Moore honored for her service to so many children. And reading and literacy was one of her passions. We remember dear time, reading centers, and all the great stories written to us and with us in her classroom. We are in full support of the Prospect Elementary School Library being dedicated to Mrs. Sidney Moore, a teacher who meant so much to our community and impacted our lives. Thank you for your consideration.
So for the students, so you're aware, about 15, maybe 18 months ago, the board developed a policy for dedications, namings, and memorials. So this would fall under a dedication. So the board will convene a committee, which I would recommend to be the president, the vice president, the site administrator of where the dedication might go, which in this case would be Miss Promone, and Mr. Pincaski, the director of facilities, so we make sure that the mechanics collect. And then myself. And then we'll get together and then we'll review this and then make a recommendation. I think board members, if we can find a time in the next week or so, we can do a quick Zoom meeting together and talk about this and then provide feedback as early as the meeting on the 17th to the board. Because I know there is an event coming up on, on June 12th. Can you guys talk on that? Because I know you're involved with that. We talked a little bit about that.
Yeah, actually, so on June 12th, we're doing simultaneously a chicken barbecue and a 5K run walk that we seconded. Yes, we started it last year. It took a lot of planning, a lot of work, but I think the turnout, especially post, not really post-COVID, but kind of in that summer, people are kind of being able to come out of their homes and actually do things for once, which was nice. The turnout was really good. It was a good event. I mean, you see community members, students, old students, students who didn't have her, but still more impacted by her, come out and just celebrate her and her life and her legacy. Because she really was an amazing lady.
I think we made about $15,000 from it just by people coming to support the cause.
And so we go to our class above, a memorial scholarship that we created last year. So we give that out once a year to, to those that have her.
Last year, we were able to give three scholarships. It's how much money we were able to put in the scholarship fund? We didn't see that go. Three scholarships last year.
Oh, I'm sorry, introduce yourself.
I'm Mrs. John.
Thank you for your interest. And then we'll circle back. As soon as we can.
Thank you for taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. We can move on to the central office message. Don't Karen has anything she wants to share or?
Yeah, just going back to the bus thing that Carrie was talking about. We need to have our game plan together and start purchasing buses by 2027 and then have our full fleet of buses electric by 2035. So we have a large road ahead of us, but there's really been no guidance yet issued. And who knows? I can't really see it happening in that, even though it seems like, you know, 2035 is a long time from now, I really can't see it happening in that quick of turnaround when there are, you know, hundreds of school districts that have hundreds of buses and, you know, we're only one state that may want to be doing this. So I will have more on that once I find out more. I'm waiting on a few proposals with regards to an electrical engineering study that we'll need to have, which will be really kind of the first step to see if the electrical grid in this area can even handle it, which I'm being told right now that it can't. So what do we need to do in order to make it handle it and that kind of thing? Other than that, status quo. Just trying to meet all the deadlines that we have and moving along. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Miller.
How do you know I had something? So this week, we celebrate the hard-working dedication of our educators. While it is important to have a singular opportunity to acknowledge their work, we really should be appreciative of our educators throughout the entire year. I personally want to take a moment to say thank you and hope that we, as a district, can demonstrate our respect for each and every one of you, no matter what the week is. Last week, we concluded our state testing in mathematics. We had an alarming number of test refusals in some of our grades. And I just wanted to extend my appreciation to Mrs. Beaver, Mrs. Perry, and Mr. Long for their work in reminding our students and grownups of the importance of the assessments for both determining individual progress but also for programmatic success. We are in the process of recruiting educators for our summer programming. We have some critical shortages in the high school and are at about 45% of the staffing necessary for our elementary school summer programs. I encourage any of our educators who are able to provide summer support to our students to let their building administrators know as soon as practical. As we've been saying this year, that we will be remanding students who are significantly below grade level to summer school. Students and families have been contacted or will be contacted in the very near future if there are concerns over the progress of their students. I also wanted to take a moment to commend our students and our performing arts coaches on the musical this past weekend. It is great to see our students and our community enjoying the performing arts after a two-year hiatus. Thank you.
Right, we'll move on to our Board of Education message. We'll start at the end, Bill.
I just want to say thanks to all you retirees and all the teachers in general for giving your all to our students, you know, year in, year out. But it really makes us, you know, extraordinary district. I also want to say, classes 2023 got my support. I can't tell you. On a personal note, this more was, was a driving force for my son to get his PhD. And to be excited, he's reading, writing, and now he's teaching at the level of finance. So we have my.
Thank you.
Jess?
I want to say thank you to all the retirees. Thank you, Bob. Your retirement's been short. I've been able to work with you. Thank you to all the teachers. I know there's a lot of different events all month, so I believe. You know, there's a lot of different events all month, so I believe this month is almost like a teacher month, like birthday month. Keep seeing all these different flyers of all kinds of things, so I just say go to all the events, enjoy it all. Thank you. Thank you to the board or administration and the community. My service here was very brief. Thank you to Meg and everyone else.
I too would like to thank the students for appreciating their teachers. I think we just always take them for granted. Without them, I don't think you appreciate until you get a little older. What you missed in school because you didn't think it was worth it. Salmae has a lot of things to offer the kids and I hope they take full advantage of them. And. I don't enjoy it much if I rap. I don't want to work either.
I want to give my appreciation for all the teachers and teachers. Obviously appreciated throughout the year. Congratulations to all the retirees. The thing I appreciated most about Bob is, and again, the member of the game. Story about this is dry when she started. She's the only teacher that's ever had me and my brother in the same classroom. They lasted about eight weeks before she had to go.
Yeah, same thing. I want to, you know, thank all the retirees. Bob, all of you put in a tremendous amount of service to the district and it didn't go unnoticed. Nurses Week starts Friday, goes to next week. I want to thank our nurses. You know, I don't think any of them are here online, but thank you anyway. They do a phenomenal job, especially these last two years through COVID. I give them a lot of credit. And of course, you know, Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, I appreciate teachers three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Mrs. John up there knows that. She might be in my top five teachers. No, my favorite teacher. Appreciate her every day of the week. Appreciate all of you every day of the week and especially this week when you get a recognition week of your own. Thank you all. Mrs. Cindy Moore, I, I, Dale. Full form. Love the idea. Can't wait to see it happen. You know, she, she had a connection with all of us in my family. She was my second grade teacher and then she taught three of our older children. My wife did her student teaching with her. We've had a connection with her for a long time, so I couldn't be more supportive of reading in the library yet. I forgot what else I was going to say.
All right, I'll take another turn in a few minutes.
Too late. I also would like to thank the teachers. You know, they, the teachers, especially in our community, they go above and beyond. And they're the first ones that they not only educate our kids, but if they see our kids are struggling or they see our kids need something, they're the first ones to organize and get together to make sure that the kids have everything that they want. They don't just say at the end of the day, you know, many of them are coaches. They volunteer for our extracurricular activities, you know, we're involved in our community. And it makes our school a better place when you know that the teachers care about the students that they're teaching. And it's not just the end of the day, I'm going home. They spend their own money to buy supplies for the classroom. They spend their own money to do special things for the kids. And just trying to recognize and say thank you, you know, it's that whole encompassing of what they do for our students. So it is a thank you for taking the time and to raise our kids because they spend a lot of time with our, with our children and they're teaching them. So it's, it's awesome that we have teachers in our community that care so much. So thank you. As far as Cindy Moore, you definitely have my support. I don't know who knows, but Cindy is my sister-in-law and so she had a special place in our heart. I was also lucky enough that all of my daughters had Cindy. So, and she of course goes into the future and, and, but, you know, Cindy really had a huge impact. She loved to read. She tried to share that with her grandchildren. She always read to them. She came back for when we had, same as workshops and always trying to depress with the kids. And when kids would see her, you know, they would always warm up and give her a hug. So she was a great person. I definitely am a hundred percent thankful of that, so.
Just a couple of things. I do want to congratulate the students and staff that did put on the wonderful workshop of fours last weekend. As Mark had noted, the drama club, because of COVID, took a two-year hiatus, so we're glad to see them back. When you have the inclusion of arts and music and dance and choreography and theater, it really is a shining example of why the arts help make us, help well school districts. And I want to thank the students from those who were in the pit and the adults who were in the pit to the stage crew, to the lighting, production, technical folks. All of those things make the actors and actresses on stage were wonderful, as well as the students who are on stage giving countless hours to entertain. There is really a delightful show, so we're looking forward to the drama club getting back into full swing. So we want to thank them. For teacher appreciation, really in our world, we're all teachers. Our bus drivers are the ambassadors of first impressions and last good nights as students come and go every single day. Our feeders have pulled the body and the soul going through the cafeteria and mentors and healers and boo-boos and injuries with our nurses and purveyors of curiosity and inquiry and really creating the leaders of tomorrow by giving them every platform which they can succeed. This week, Dr. Beeler and I are working with a company that we're going to partner with to create some really unique accelerated opportunities for our secondary students from credit accruals to additional digitalized TP courses. So we're looking very much forward to that exciting opportunity for some of our secondary students. And so we'll have more to report on that, but I do want to also echo, I think what most of us have said is that I choose support the dedication of the Library of Cindy Moore. When I started here eleven years ago, she was one of the first, if not people's person that reached out to me to welcome me to the district and say, if you have any questions, my door is always open. And so I would fully support endorsing and dedicating the library to Cindy. I couldn't think of a better, more deserving person who's impacted more lives through teaching to career and her example. So that's a pretty good choice. While I did take it as a liberty kind of, you know, after eleven years, I think I have a pretty good pulse of where the board is going to land on some issues. So I did take the opportunity to reach out to the architect to get me some samples and some mockups of what the dedication sign would look like. And hopefully they have that within the next day or two or three, hopefully they're decent. So we should be able to have, assuming, you know, those who are to plan, at least the ability of the five K run walk. Someone about that feature. Thank you. All right. Let me move on to.
Oh, boy. All right, time's up. It's good news. May seventeen, big bowl.
Yes.
Come on out, tell all your friends.
Get the bowling, get the bowling boots, was it?
All right, tell all your friends.
Here in the public. In the gym.
In the gym.
Yes, hopefully I'm opening the polls at noon, if I can.
You're always the first vote, so you can't break it straight.
Exactly. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie. Second by Brad. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I want to ask Carrie about the cafeteria profit loss again. I'll give her a break since she's not here.
All right, we have a motion by Carrie, second by Brad. All in favor? I oppose abstaining motion, Carrie. Item six, our policies, so we need a motion to approve policy seventy-three-one.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? I oppose abstaining motion, Carrie. And we have no new business. That means our personnel consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. Motion by Sue. Second.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? I oppose abstaining motion, Carrie. We have, we have several individuals that are online or here for tenure appointments. So if we can start with Mr. Seaver or Ms. Martinez, Ms. Marcus, and Ms. Vanderhoof.
And Mr. You, all right, you've got your. So I first want to introduce Ms. Martinez, and she's actually here today. She's brought stability to the Spanish department that for years saw immense turnover. Ms. Martinez has been a leader among the staff in a sort of practices in trauma and palliative care. These practices are reflected in the lessons she teaches and also how she interacts with the students. In her classroom, she sets the tone and culture of the room by using these practices to create a safe environment where students are able to take risks and venture out of their comfort zone while still being supported and encouraged. Ms. Martinez is a team player who's always willing to help out and continually seeks to improve her craft. It is a great pleasure to not only recommend, but to interview Ms. Martinez as her head.
In four, if you're crunching down, you got to have a speech.
Online, we have Mr. Cannon. Mr. Cannon has created a very engaging technology class. He uses the engineering by design philosophy in which students research, design, construct, and then revise projects, construct the best version of the project. He has held competitions in egg drops, mousetrap cars, and other innovative projects. He runs a very hands-on class with the research, with the research and design portion, making the bookwork and the development, construction, and revision through the hands-on portion. Mr. Cannon has educated himself on much of our new equipment and the steam wave, so he's able to incorporate these into the lessons. Mr. Cannon is a team player. He's coaching track club for us and is always willing to help with coverage for any of our high school initiatives. Mr. Cannon is our. Next, we have Marie Vanderhoof. Marie Vanderhoof is one of our special education teachers, and I'm extremely pleased to introduce and recommend Marie Vanderhoof for tenure. Marie brings math certification to our special education department. With new social certification going into effect, our program requires special education teachers to also have certifications in specific areas that they teach. We are fortunate to have someone of Marie's caliber as a teacher who is also has a certification through the new. Marie is very engaging and passionate about her students and teaching. She is dynamic and enthusiastic in regards to teaching, helping, and supporting her students and the staff she works with. Marie has been and will continue to be a true asset to students of Salmae High School. Next, we have Kayla Kabuchio as one of our math teachers. Kayla, yes, and our newest mom too. Kayla is a phenomenal teacher who is an engaging, energetic classroom. Her students feel safe and welcomed in her room, and she has developed great relationships with them and her peers. Kayla is always willing to help out and take part in school activities. She's been a class advisor every year since she started, and she's also been grade level team leader. She always takes part in pep assemblies and other school-based activities. Currently, Kayla is teaching our Algebra I and One D students, which culminates in a Regents exam that is a graduation requirement. Kayla is a certified New York State master teacher and has presented at different math-related conferences. She is very creative with her lessons and makes learning meaningful to the students. And ultimately, she gets the most out of her students. Congratulations, Kayla, on two fronts. And then I think my last one is Judy Norkus. And Judy Norkus is a natural. She is energetic, enthusiastic, organized, and she is a kid magnet. Her delivery of science curriculum is engaging and collaborative and meaningful to students. She has built tremendous relationships with students of all ages. Not only do students she has this year seek her help, but students she has had in previous years and students honestly that she has yet to have that come to her classroom at lunchtime to eat and spend time with her. Aside from being a phenomenal teacher, Judy has dedicated herself to Salmae and the students we have here. She's a class advisor, cheerleading advisor, a coach for lacrosse, and a true team player. Judy is always ready to take part in school activities, whether they be assemblies or just being the student's biggest cheerleader. It is a great pleasure to introduce and recommend Ms. Judy Norkus for tenure.
And then we have a Seneca staff member.
I have Ms. Prey's wife here today. When I first started at Seneca, she was a working and a special education teacher, and she was excelling at it. She had distinctive instruction. She was coaching. She was amazing. But this year she took on the challenge of being our district's first ever social emotional coach. She's full of so much drive and determination. Whenever we challenge her with a new task, she takes it on with a smile and she has it done within a week. She's committed to the social emotional needs of not only our students, but also our staff. She's continuous, continually meeting with staff and students, trying to build relationships, always going above and beyond to do what she can to support. As she has been at the head of many great new programs and professional development for our staff this year, and she continues to hold us accountable with her follow-through and implementation of programs. She has a lot to offer our district, and we truly appreciate her hard work and dedication to our school. Ms. Schreiber thought?
Yes.
So Ms. Schreiber has a sixth grade teacher at Seneca. I have truly found her to be a compassionate and dedicated, dedicated to the individual needs of her students. Ms. Schreiber has had great success working as a book teacher. She's extremely flexible, strong collaboration and communication with her colleagues, and also prepared for her students. Mrs. Schreiber is always willing to learn and take on a challenge. She has a strong understanding and passion for children, and her personality shines bright throughout our school. Congratulations, Ms. Schreiber.
And I believe there is one other individual on the call who's being appointed as one of our preferred daily substitutes, Mr. Richard Salsa. Is Richard still on the call?
Richard Sala is a graduate of SUNY Buffalo with certification in seventh through twelfth grade emotional studies. He has a number of years studying and teaching around the Buffalo and Cataracts area, including serving as a native studies instructor with the Seneca Nation of Indians. Mr. Sala is focused on building relationships with students, making learning enjoyable, focusing on diverse learning needs, and creating an inclusive classroom environment. He's already demonstrated his flexibility and positive attitude as we worked through technical glitches during our interview. And we are very excited to have him onboard as a preferred substitute at that school. And we are very excited to have him on board as a preferred substitute at that school.
That's it? There's one more. Okay, one more question. So, with Bob leaving, of course, we we need a new captain of the ship. Uh, so I believe is our superintendent appointment in our contract. And so, here is all that in accordance with the education law, section seventeen-eleven, Dr. Mark D. Beeler be appointed as the district's next superintendent of schools effective July first, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. In the terms of the contract of employment be approved, which the president of the board is hereby authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the district. And we are going to do a roll call vote.
Ray?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget. So we need a motion to approve. Motion by Sue. Second by Brad. Now we can do, now we can do the roll call vote.
Ray?
Yes.
John?
Opposed.
Oh. Colton?
Oh.
Earl?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
And free?
Yes.
It sounds, it sounds like Sue was a little taken aback by mine.
Yes, I am.
Yeah. Well, here's one of the things. This has nothing to do with Dr. Beeler as a person, as an educator, as a leader. This has to do with the process. My colleagues know that I was very opposed to the process. And I voiced my concerns, opinions loudly numerous times. I didn't appreciate the process one bit, but I have full confidence in Dr. Beeler and his ability to lead our district. So this is not in any way, shape, or form negatively towards him. It is all about the facilitator of the process and how it went along. So that's what this is about, Sue.
Thank you. Okay. So we have five yes and one no, and motion is Carrie. Congratulations. Bob's left a long legacy here, and, um, I'm sure that you're up for the challenge of continuing and to keep selling it going and building a great positive direction. Uh, just curious that we all have confidence, um, in you is keeping over. Um, and it's nice that you you know what you bring to the table, that you are a part of the community already. I know you're a member of the Flanna's Club, the T Club, the Ross Club. Everybody, you know, so it's nice that you are a part of the community, uh, and relate to part of the community and are invested in our community. Again, we see what happens when people are invested in our school district and how it blossoms. So, uh, congratulations and welcome aboard as the captain of the ship.
Thank you. I really look forward to this opportunity. Um, I have very much, uh, appreciated the opportunity that I've had to work here for the past seven years. Um, I look forward to the opportunity to move us and continue the great work that Bob has done. Uh, most importantly, I have a deep respect for all of the members, uh, of the Warrior family here. And, uh, I just hope that I can, uh, continue to do the good work that we have started and serve each one of our members here to the best of my ability and to the, uh, level and extent that they deserve. So, thank you.
And nine is our board information report. We have the second reading of policy seventy-three-one. Uh, we have our yearbooks. Everything she's got with copies of the new prospect in Seneca, because I love the little series and the scene, the kids, the new kids, they're coming, Holly James, so thank you very much. Um, we did the dedication for the Prospect Library to have a letter and thread. Thank you to the class of twenty twenty-three and their advisor for coming to the meeting tonight. Then we have our upcoming events. We have finance, uh, on five-ten, indigenous ed on five-eleven. And again, as a reminder, five-seventeen, please everybody come out and vote, your parents, your friends, everybody you know to come out and vote and get, come over vote. All I can do is ask you to come out and vote. Uh, and with that, we do have an executive session, uh, for the purpose, uh, litigation, litigation, yes, and property. And so thank you again, everybody, for coming. Students, if you have forms that need to be signed, please bring it down in your house to the panel. So we made a motion to approve the executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Sue. All in favor?
I.
Closed abstain motion, Carrie.
Nobody anticipated action.